So that, and that would be, all right, we have one going in. It's a change.
She was saying that maybe the last one.
Yeah.
Oh, we didn't have a meeting.
She was here for.
Okay, so we.
Yes.
Last time.
This one's going.
Did you ever try to drive through there at like 3:30 in the afternoon?
This one, that was.
Yeah.
These are all.
That's what I had.
Then the two.
It's $1,900.
What's that?
You get that.
Yes. For some reason I don't.
And we missed the supermoon this year.
We're not live.
Is that a big orange one?
Adam, we're not live. Okay. Thanks.
I'll take a closer look.
All right. Everybody ready to go and then Jerry can just join us. Okay.
Supported by the documentation, not reality.
Now called to order the December 7th, 2017 meeting of the City of Nashville Planning Board. Uh, Mr. Secretary, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson.
President.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Scott Leclerc.
Here.
Ed Weber, here. Alderman Sean McGinnis, Alderman Thomas Lopez, Steve DuCrane, Dan Kelly.
Here.
David Robbins, Jerry Rupucci, Maggie Harper.
Here.
Thank you, and we do have regular members absent, so Ms. Harper will be participating and voting this evening. Uh, next up, approval of the minutes for the November 7th, November 2nd, 2017 meeting. Do we have minutes? Let's see. I guess these were carried over.
Yeah, that should be from the previous package.
Previous package, all right. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the minutes? Have you taken a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kelly to approve the minutes. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions?
Extention, yeah.
Passes with one abstention from Mr. Leclerc. Communications, evening Roger.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of planning board. If you turn your packet, I'll quickly go through a few items the board received after the packet was mailed out. Uh, you have one case on tonight, which is case number two. Uh, you have a communication dated December 7th from Fieldstone. Uh, it's updating the waiver request. Um, Scott has conveniently starred the items in that communication for you. Uh, you've got a communication from the fire department on the same case, uh, regarding emergency access. And lastly, you have, um, on this case anyway, um, you have a communication from engineering, um, addressing the concerns, uh, that were expressed to you in another communication. And under other business item number three, which is a Bama Street discontinuance, you have a communication from the city engineer's office, um, finding that the discontinuance is acceptable to them. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Report of committee and liaison. Mr. Kelly, Mr. Weber, anything to report?
I have none.
Thank you. Okay, I'll now read the procedure for this evening's meeting. After the legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan or subdivision plan is read by the chair, the board will determine if the application is complete and ready for the board to take jurisdiction. The public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or representative will be given time to present an overview and description of their project. They shall speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulations. The board will then have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. The chair will then ask for testimony from the audience. First, anyone wishing to speak in opposition or concerned of the plan may speak. Please come forward to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. This will be the time to express your concerns or ask questions you may have regarding the plan. Next, testimony will come from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The applicant will then be given a rebuttal period, at which time they should respond to any concerns raised by prior public testimony. One public member will be allowed to respond to only those items brought forth during the applicant's rebuttal period. After this has been completed, the public hearing will end, and the board will resume the public meeting, at which time the board will deliberate and vote on the application before us. We ask that both sides keep their remarks to the subject at hand and to not repeat what has already been said. We want to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and considering all applicable approval criteria established in the Nashville revised ordinances. Thank you for your interest and courteous attention. I ask you please turn off your cell phones at this time. All business conditional special use permits, none. All business subdivision plans, none. All business site plans, case number one, postponed indefinitely. Uh, new business conditional special use permits, none. New business subdivision plans, none. New business site plans, case number two, John J. Flatley Company owner, application acceptance of proposed site plan to develop a portion of the property into 28 townhouse units with associated site improvements. Property is located at 100 to 300 Innovative Way, Sheet A, Lot 798, zone park industrial and urban residence, and this is located in Ward A. In this case, had been postponed from the November 2nd, 2017 meeting. As to case number two, can I have a motion, this application is complete and ready for the board to accept jurisdiction?
So moved.
Uh, motion by Mr. Kelly, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weber. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record. My name is Chad Brannon. I'm a civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. Our office is located at 206 Elm Street in Milford, New Hampshire, and with me this evening is Kevin Walker from the John J. Flatley Company. We are before you tonight, um, seeking to amend site plan approval 2165 in order to construct a 28-unit townhouse development within Gateway Hills. The project area is situated on tax map parcel A-798, which consists of roughly 129.7 acres of land and is situated within Gateway Hills, also formerly known as the Nashville Technology Park. Currently Gateway Hills encompasses approximately 400 acres of land and is a mixed-use development with professional office space, research and development space, and buildings, um, retail buildings, restaurants, a hotel, and multifamily residential buildings situated within. Gateway Hills is serviced by one public road being Tara Boulevard and three private roads consisting of Innovative Way, Research Drive, and Digital Drive. The proposal for this project consists of constructing a 28-unit townhouse-style development between 300 Innovative Way and the existing ski slope. The project is situated on the north side of the access road going to 300 Innovative Way, which will now, um, or is, as part of this proposal, is going to be named Transistor Road. This development proposes to construct seven three-story four-unit buildings. The individual units will be two-bedroom units with a total square footage of approximately 1,750 square feet, which includes a garage space on the first level consisting of approximately 510 square feet. The buildings have been situated along a proposed cul-de-sac road which will service the development. The cul-de-sac road is proposed to be constructed at 24 feet in width with bituminous asphalt curbing and will be approximately 419 linear feet in length. There will be a communal mailbox situated along the proposed roadway on-site, and the development, um, will be serviced by municipal sewer and Pennachuck Water, as well as underground electric and communication services. Each unit on-site will have two dedicated parking spots, one in the garage and one in the driveway. Those will be tandem parking, um, there'll be tandem parking. The development will be serviced by sidewalks on both sides of the proposed roadway, and there will be a pedestrian connection alongside of Transistor Road which will connect to the, which will connect the subject site to the ski area as well as the parking lot for 300 Innovative Way. This project has been designed to provide safe pedestrian and vehicular access, which includes adequate turning movements for daily use as well as emergency response vehicles. The connection to the municipal sewer system will consist of expanding the sewer system approximately 750 linear feet from Innovative Way to the proposed site. And the munis, the connection to Pennachuck's water system will require an extension from the existing hotel within Gateway Hills all the way up to the proposed project, which is approximately a 1,460 linear foot extension. Other improvements on-site consist of landscaping, lighting, drainage, and utility infrastructure. The lighting plans for this project will consist of installing a blend of pole-mounted and building-mounted lights. Each unit will have entry lights, and the pole-mounted lights will consist of nine LED lights along the proposed roadway, as depicted on the plans that we have before you this evening. The drainage design for the project consists of collecting and conveying all of the stormwater runoff from all of the improved areas to a stormwater management area just to, just north of the proposed townhouse units, which is depicted on the grading plan, which is the plan on the left-hand side on the board this evening. So you have the, this is the drainage area is right up in here. The stormwater runoff will be routed to this area through a combination of open swales as well as closed drainage systems. The stormwater management design consists of a sediment for bay, the construction of a wet pond, and there's also a treatment swell proposed with this project. These practices will address qualitative and quantitative mitigation for this proposal. I will say that the stormwater management components for this project have been designed to meet and exceed not only city standards, but also the New Hampshire Department Environmental Services alteration of terrain standards, as this project will require a permit through that agency as well. There are wetland buffer impacts associated with this project, mainly for utility extensions and for stormwater mitigation. We did receive a favorable, favorable review from the Conservation Commission and also a special exception through the zoning board of adjustments for this proposal. This plan that we have before you this evening does contemplate all of the conditions imposed by both of those boards. Over the last few months, we have been working with city staff to address review comments, uh, which have included going before the fire department, engineering department, um, and also submissions to traffic and health departments. Recently, we have obtained, um, a sign-off from the fire department for this proposal, and we did, uh, address all of the outstanding engineering comments, which I believe there's a communication to that effect in the packet this evening, too. We have reviewed the staff report, uh, for this evening's meeting, and we have no issues with any of the staff recommendations or conditions, and we do have a few waivers that we are requesting with this application. Um, so with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have at this time, or I could certainly go on to the waiver requests that we have.
If you could just very briefly, uh, address the waivers.
Sure, certainly. So the waiver request letter that we have for this application is actually dated December 7th, um, today. We made some adjustments to this letter, um, to incorporate the, um, some communications that we received from the fire department. So we are requesting three waivers that are outlined in this memo. The first waiver pertains to section 190, 279B, and it's regarding drafting standards and the plans not being smaller than 50 feet to one inch. Considering the size of this project, and this is a waiver that we've sought on just about every site plan that we've done on this site, because ultimately we're dealing with a, you know, a 129 or 130 acre parcel in general, and then you have the surrounding areas that we have to show. So in order to depict that on one plan, uh, we have an overall site plan that's prepared at a one inch equals 200 scale. Um, so we are requesting a waiver from this particular section so that we can depict everything on one plan, one overall plan. So given the size of the subject parcel, we respectfully request that the board, um, grant a waiver to this particular section. That's the first request. Would you like me to proceed and go through all of these, or?
Yeah, that would be great. And then we can save any questions for the end.
The second waiver request that we have before you pertains to section 190, 211B. Design standards and construction specifications of private streets shall be the same as for public streets. We are requesting a waiver from this section to permit the construction of a 24-foot-wide paved private road to service the 28-unit townhouse project, where a 28-foot-wide road is the requirement for public streets. We are also requesting that bituminous concrete curbing be allowed rather than granite curbing. The applicant has extensive experience with develop, with developing and maintaining this type of multifamily housing, um, development, and the size of the proposal does not warrant access wider than what is currently proposed. The proposed private road includes a functional turnaround for emergency response vehicles and municipal fire hydrants at the locations, um, requested by the fire department. As this board knows, we have done quite a bit of development out at Gateway Hills, and for example, the residential apartments, um, to the north, Tara Heights, we also used bituminous, um, asphalt curbing on that project as well, and we also had roadway widths of 24 feet in that project. So as I stated before, that my client is quite familiar, um, with the maintenance requirements with this, and so, um, we believe that it's, that, um, you know, these materials will be suitable for this development. Speaking to the, um, 24-foot-wide requirement, the site has been designed to allow for two, uh, parking spaces per unit, which exceeds the city's maximum of 1.9 spaces per unit for multifamily housing, and there is ample parking available to visitors in the existing parking lots at 300 Innovative Way adjacent to the site. So the existing, you know, we don't believe there's a parking issue, and we understand through, uh, working with the fire department, that typically the 28-foot-wide road is required to address, you know, a visiting park, visitor parking, um, need. We also have added signage to the plans to address no part, to delineate no parking along the proposed roadway. We believe that the proposed road width, built to city standards, will provide, or built to these standards, will provide safe access to the development and would be consistent with other developments previously approved in the city. The proposed design is also consistent with the New Hampshire Department of Transportation's suggested minimum design standards for subdivision streets, which recommends a 20-foot travelway with two-foot shoulders, 24-foot wide total, for subdivisions with an average daily traffic of between 50 and 200 vehicles per day. From the proposed trip generation memorandum prepared by VHB for this application, the average daily traffic generated by this use is 163 trips per day. So we fall within that range, and therefore supporting a 24-foot-wide paved road being reasonable for this particular proposal. Again, you know, my letter goes on to state that it's important to point out that the fire department has reviewed and approved of this design, um, and that we have and are proposing no parking signage along the proposed roadway. So based on these conditions, we believe a 28-foot-wide roadway to service 20, a 28-unit townhouse development would be an excessive requirement, as it would create an undesirable setting, result in additional disturbance in drainage mitigation, and would create an unreasonable financial hardship to my client. So for these reasons, we are requesting that the board, um, grant a waiver from section 190, 211B, allowing a 24-foot-wide roadway with bituminous, uh, curbing, asphalt curbing. That's the second waiver. Um, the third waiver pertains to section 190, 208E, numbers one and two. Um, E1 requires that dead-end or cul-de-sac streets are designed, designed to be permanently closed at one end, shall not exceed 750 feet in length, and E2 states that the board may grant a waiver on dead-end roadway length, on a dead-end roadway length if emergency access is provided. We are requesting a waiver from these sections to permit a dead-end roadway in excess of 750 feet in length without an emergency access. The proposed roadway servicing this development is approximately 490, or, excuse me, 419 linear feet in length, which falls under the 750-foot dead-end roadway requirement. The unique circumstances of this project is that the new roadway takes access off from, um, the access to 300 Innovative Way, which is also a dead-end, dead-end road, thereby making the total dead-end road length into the project over 750 feet. The measurement from the intersection of 300, or, from Innovative Way, um, which is, which is over here, Innovative Way and the access to, to 300 Innovative Way is right here. So the distance from here to our proposed roadway is 575 feet. And again, the distance from, of our roadway from this point all the way into the cul-de-sac is approximately 419 feet, making the total dead-end length 994 feet. We have reviewed this design with the fire department, and they are comfortable, uh, with this particular layout and proposal. The fire department's agreement in support of this project, in support of this dead-end roadway exceeding 750 feet, is a function of the fact that this project has, um, adequate water supply. Um, the units are relatively small footprints, and the buildings will all be fully sprinkled. And that is addressed in their letter or their email, um, I believe it's dated November 8th. What my client has agreed to is one of the conditions pertaining to the, um, emergency access component is should the ski area, which is located in this location here, ever be redeveloped into any type of a residential or commercial use, uh, my client has agreed to, to put a connection to the townhouse, uh, development at that time. Um, so again, we do have the support and sign-off from the, uh, fire department relative to the design that we have before you this evening. And this design does meet all, um, life safety issues. So for these reasons, we believe that granting this waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations, and we believe that a denial of this waiver would create a hardship for my client, as it would not afford him the right to reasonably develop the subject property. And for those reasons, we are asking the board to grant a waiver to that, to section, sections, excuse me, 190, 208, E1, and 2. So those are the waivers that we have before you for this application.
Thank you. Questions in the board? Mr. Leclerc?
Uh, just a, a couple of things on the waiver. Um, so the waiver for the city's street standards, you're only asking for the waiver with respect to the curves and the width, right? That's it? The base and construction, the rest of it is?
That's correct. The depth, the material, and everything.
Only those two criteria and, uh, standards.
That's, that's correct.
Okay. And, um, okay. Then I, um, can you expla, explain just the parking for the, the ski area there? Like, how does that work? Where does the parking, like, when people visit the ski area, where do they currently park? How's that?
Sure, I can go over that. Um, it's just that when we presented the site plan for the ski area, so this is the ski area here.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a crosswalk right near the entrance to the ski area. There's some handicap parking on the south side of, uh, what is going to be Transistor Road, but is, is currently the access to 300 Innovative Way. So there's handicap parking there, and then there's a stairway that goes up to, um, the innovate, the, uh, parking lot for 300 Innovative Way, which is a very substantial parking lot.
Right.
Location there. So that's where the parking is for the, for the ski.
Can you show us on this map?
Yeah, sure.
Please.
Um, so if I can see it, yeah. Do you mind if I approach?
You can come up and show us, yeah, please.
That'd be easier. I have the microphones on. So the, this is the, uh, ski slope here, you know, obviously the townhouse development here. Um, so you can see on this plan, um, this is the, kind of the ticket booth for the, the ski area.
Right.
Um, and then there's a crosswalk located right here, and then, um, handicap parking on the, uh, south side of, of the, this roadway, and then there's a, this shows a path going up to, uh, the parking lot, but actually what, they built a stairway in this location here, so it goes directly to the parking area. So this is the entire parking area that, um, could be used for the, the ski area. And I've, I've yet to see that parking at 50%, you know, use. I mean, that's a parking lot.
Right, yeah.
How many spots are in that lot?
Um. A big one? Or it's like?
There's a lot of parking spots, yeah. I don't have.
Yeah, I guess my reason for asking the question is just, you know, it's not going to become convenience for the people that are going to the ski area to try and park on, you know, around the units on that road. It's gonna be closer for them is to walk there to the ski area from, you know.
If these guys wanted to use the, the ski area.
Well, I'm thinking people visiting the ski area, and they, you know, they get up there and they look, oh, there's a road I can park on over by these units, so. You said you're gonna have signage and stuff like that, but.
Yeah, that's, that would be policed for sure, and I, I know they currently police parking on-site and.
Right.
Um, you know, there's not gonna be, there's not gonna be any, you know, ski area consumers that are allowed to utilize any parking of that, on, along that roadway or certainly in the driveways for the units.
How about on Transistor Road? Is that signed, no parking on that as well?
It is. It is, yeah.
What's the shoulder condition like? Does it look favorable for parking at the moment?
Um, well, the night, we're actually proposing to construct a sidewalk on, on that side, so that's gonna kind of eliminate, you know, the, any parking potential. But they did put, you know, no parking signage in there, actually, is some large boulders that they've placed kind of along the road to control any, um, parking through there, too. And obviously, they have employees, you know, company employees that, that run the ski area and have the ability to police that as well, 'cause it's very visible.
Okay. All right.
Do tow people at Tara Heights, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Um. So are you proposing or not proposing a pedestrian walkway directly from that end of the, of the lot to the housing development? Yeah, like up there?
What we're proposing is the sidewalk, you know, the sidewalk's gonna come, is gonna come up along the, um, proposed roadway that's gonna service the townhouse development. is going to come up along the proposed roadway that's going to service the townhouse development. And then there's going to be a crosswalk right here.
There is.
Yep. And then there's a sidewalk that runs along this side of the, you know, the south side of the access road and will tie into the stairway. And ultimately, you know, kind of connect everything. And that is on the, that is on the site plan.
It is.
Here, you can see it here, the sidewalk. And then the cross, the crosswalk here.
So with regard to the staff reports and stuff, you, you mentioned you were okay with the staff report requirements and, or current proposed stipulations. You've seen the engineering letter from November fourteenth?
I have, and I.
Still a granite curb recommendation on that letter. So that's, that's like in conflict with what your waiver is.
Well, the, my, my latest communications with the engineering department, and I think also that it was, it was sent to staff as well. Because we asked them directly, I mean, obviously, we're requesting a waiver from those requirements.
Right.
And Mr. Dukrain, Dukran stated that he can't recommend a waiver from the, the standard. So that's just, my understanding is it's a statement in his letter. So there was really only one outstanding comment, which pertained to the velocity of the stormwater runoff through the culverts onsite. And we did address that comment. The other three, I believe, were just related to, or two maybe, were related to the private road standards waiver and then the curbing.
Yeah.
And I, I pulled the letter up to make sure. But, so we are not agreeing to those comments. I guess I was speaking towards his latest email communication because we specifically stated and responded to him in a, in a, that fashion. And he got back to us and said, we can't.
Right.
We can't make a recommendation against the, the, you know, the city specs. You have to request that waiver before the board.
Yeah, okay, thanks. I, I just wanted to point it out so it wasn't getting confused like you accepted something.
Sure.
Understanding that.
I appreciate that.
That's all I have.
Thank you. On one statement you were here, would it be possible, or even it might be a good idea as you made a walkway stairwell for the skid slope and for people who are going to have visitors and a whole bunch of visitors, you were, they're going to be using that parking lot, would it behoove you to put another stairs directly opposite to make it convenient, more convenient for visitors to park in that parking lot and then have direct access? And they don't have to walk down the stairs and walk all the way across, then walk down the road, which is a good distance?
The proposal was to utilize the stairway that's already constructed and to try to maintain some of that, that vegetation between the parking area, you know, the ski area and the residential area. So our preference would be to utilize the existing, existing stairwell that we're proposing. But I understand why you're asking the comment. And we did, we did evaluate that there is more elevation difference directly across from the townhouse project, which is why the stairs actually for the ski area are situated where they are. That's where their, the differential elevation is at least.
Oh, okay.
So the preference would be to utilize what, what's currently there.
Currently, on your, the apartment building that has putamis curbing, my knowledge and I live in a condominium that had putamis and over a few years, the curbing gets destroyed with snow plowing. Do you currently have a policy in place that if the, if it does get damaged in the new location or in that location, that you replace it immediately? Or is that up to the homeowners to go and fit that bill?
No, the homeowners don't, I mean, I'll speak to this and then I'll let Kevin address this if I miss anything. But the, the homeowners, the residents within Gateway Hills don't, don't pay for any of the improvements. There certainly is a maintenance schedule that Mr. Flatley, you know, I guess you could say follows with all of his properties. I mean, I think they're well-kept. Yes, asphalt curbing is more susceptible to damage, you know, from plowing. But we have seen, you know, just in, in the industry, we've seen it last twenty, you know, twenty-plus years if people are, you know, responsible. So I think that, you know, when, when the contracts for plowing come up every year, those are things that he obviously evaluates because they do repairs in the springtime of any of the damage that, that occurs if there is, is repairs that are needed. It's a very large property. There's a lot of maintenance that goes into maintaining, you know, the, the property and it's, in an aesthetically pleasing, pleasing in a way, in a way that does function. But I don't know if you want to speak to that any?
No, you're, you're, you answered my question.
Okay.
Yeah. My concern was some places, you know, we may, we built it here. You, if anything goes wrong, you take care of it. And.
No, they have.
Homeowners up the creek without a paddle.
And I, it's important to point out, too, that they have, you know, the John J. Flatley Company has offices onsite, you know, at this place. So people can go there and, you know, and they're there. They see it all the time. There's people out there all the time. You know, the last three or four times I've been onsite, I've seen three or four maintenance crews that, you know, that, that are from the John J. Flatley Company. So I know they're there. Their presence is there.
Yeah. It was, no, I, everything you guys touch I've seen is awesome. You know, you guys do a great job. The mailboxes, are they going to be open to the weather or they're going to be covered so that multiple boxes and everything don't get? Mailboxes that you use a key and open it up? If it's to the weather, it would seem that it would stuff them.
Typically, a typical mail kiosk will have a roof that, in a, in a, in an overhang over, you know, the mailboxes so that people can get to their mail and have it not be damaged.
Okay, thank you. And as far as, I probably haven't gone over this, but the sewer system, you guys are adding more and more and more. How far away from where you have to make improvements are you to the sewer system?
Well, we've done, we've provided flow calculations to, you know, the engineering department in the past relative to the capacity of the pipes. That's a really difficult question to answer because it's ultimately a function of the user. You know, this, this use is, is a pretty low demand, you know, residential uses. But depending on what, you know, commer, you know, or I should say a, you know, twenty-eight-unit residential demand. But if, you know, if a different company came in and they had, you know, more of a demand, then those are all things that get evaluated on a project.
Oh, okay.
You know, you know, on project, every project, case by case.
I didn't want to put you in the hot spot, but.
We've made, we've submitted information to the engineering department and they've reviewed it and.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Is blasting going to be required?
No. We didn't hit any ledge in any of the test pits on this site, which was a pleasant surprise.
So it's going to be slab construction or are you going to have a basement?
Well, there, there are garage on the first floor, so it's slab. Yeah, slab and frost walls.
Okay. Secondly, I remain concerned about the traffic conditions you're going to be creating. I read your notes on, from the report from VHB. And quite frankly, with twenty-eight units and assuming just twenty-eight people, how does the math work? And can you refer me not only to this document that you have, which I understand has a number of segments? I don't understand how you get your numbers.
Okay.
And secondly, I've always been proponent of trying to solve the Spitbrook Road problem. In my opinion, this contributes to it even more.
Just trying to find, we didn't prepare the traffic memo, so I'm just trying to find that.
No, but you endorsed it, you paid for it, so I expect you to explain it.
Sure. So the traffic for this use is kind of, it's, it's an off-peak. It, it, and it's kind of a reverse-flow situation. So people are coming to work in the morning. The residential traffic's going to be leaving, you know, the site. So there, I think in general, you know, the, the trip generation that was done in VHB's, VHB's report essentially says this is an off-peak user, meaning traffic is always a function of timing. And this is going to be, you know, the, the peaks for this particular use are not going to coincide for, you know, the, the critical movements of Spitbrook, Spitbrook Road.
That's an assumption that you guys have made. It will be off-peak, therefore it wouldn't impact the, the traffic problem.
It's an assumption that the traffic engineer has made, who is a professional that deals with traffic, for sure. And this was submitted to the traffic engineer at the city. And it's my understanding that he has signed off on this memo and understands the rationale and the logic and the, you know, the, the, the expertise and judgment that went into it.
Could you explain that to me then? Could you explain to me the criteria you used in order to come up with this, this number?
I'm just taking a look at it real quick. Because like I said, I didn't prepare this and frankly, I didn't pay for this. You know, Mr. Flatley and, and his company.
You're representing Mr. Flatley.
Yes, we certainly are. And so the, if I may, just take a quick moment to.
Take all the time, you know.
Thank you. I don't know if, do you want to address this at all, Kevin?
I think just, again, Kevin Walker from the John Flatley Company. Just to kind of expand on a little bit on what Chad said, and I understand what you're thinking also. People are already in the site if they live there. So in the morning, the impact is traffic going into the site. These people are already in the site, so there's no more additional impact.
That's another assumption that I don't buy.
Well, there can't be impact on Spitbrook Road if people are not on Spitbrook Road.
They're leaving. Not everybody's going to work on the site that you're building. They're going to be leaving, go someplace.
So you've got a group of cars coming in.
Yep.
And you've got a much smaller group of cars, obviously, because it's residential, leaving the site. So they're going in opposite directions, so there's no additional impact. Cars are coming in off of the highway, basically, from the Route Three side into the site. People are leaving the site. They may, maybe they go left, maybe they go right. But they're not on the same side of the road. They're not using the same lanes. It's a completely different pattern.
But the people that are going out are adding to the congestion that's already horrendous on Spitbrook Road. Can you address that issue?
Sure.
Do not assume everybody there stays there.
The, the issues with Spitbrook Road are twofold. One, in the morning, less, less so than in the afternoon. But in the morning, it's traffic heading westbound on Spitbrook towards Gateway Hills. In the afternoon, it is on the eastbound side of Spitbrook Road, leaving Gateway Hills. So these traffic patterns don't coincide at all. So in the morning, when cars are leaving, there is no, there are no issues eastbound.
On Spitbrook?
On Spitbrook Road.
Really?
And in the afternoon, I'm sorry, yeah, and in the afternoon, same, same thing, except westbound.
So what I'm hearing you say is there are no problems on Spitbrook Road. Forget about the morning or the afternoon.
Well, no, you can't, you can't forget about the morning. It's, it's very important, the morning. In, in the morning, no, there are no problems on Spitbrook Road heading towards the highway. If I'm heading east on Spitbrook Road, could probably do it with my eyes closed in the morning. Wouldn't dare do it in the afternoon. If I'm coming off of the highway heading towards Gateway Hills in the afternoon, probably wouldn't do it with my eyes closed, probably have a better chance than in the morning. Because there's a lot more traffic coming in.
My attitude, as you probably now understand, is you're going to be asking for another building to be built, a research and development facility, adding more people, more congestion. Don't assume that those people live onsite. We've got a problem with Spitbrook Road. Is Flatley going to be addressing that soon?
So let me, so this is the next part, and I'm glad you asked that. So with something that's a commercial development, I'm with you a hundred percent. It doesn't apply in this case because it's not commercial. Commercial development, depending on the size of it, if it was a two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-square-foot R and D site, for instance, there would be traffic impact. No doubt about it, not going to question it, not going to argue about it. We've got paperwork that says there's going to be an impact. There'll be improvements done on Spitbrook Road, which we have designed. It's been reviewed by your traffic department. We're also in the midst, right now, speaking with the New Hampshire DOT about hopefully trying to get a ramp off the northern end of the site to help people get off the site and not impact Spitbrook Road. We're in the process of dealing with VHB, our traffic consultant. As part of the DOT process, before they'll even entertain a ramp, they want to see what else can be done before we even entertain giving you a ramp. Spitbrook Road improvements are one. The exit ramps, strangely enough, are two. So coming off southbound end, northbound out of Massachusetts, both of those ramps would be improved. So Spitbrook Road would be improved, the ramps would be improved. There may be other improvements that we're looking at. I don't want to get into it too much right now because I'm not a hundred percent sure in the design. There might be a little bit more improvement on Spitbrook Road than just in front of the site. After all that's done, then the state would say, yeah, go ahead and put your ramp in. But yes, so that's a long story. The short is, the short is, we understand it's going to have to be improvements. And we're in the works of putting a whole package together of what those improvements are going to be. And there'll be a timeline, depending on the density of a commercial development, that those will have to be done. The traffic department is aware, engineering is aware, we're fully aware, our traffic engineer is aware. And that's why we're talking to DOT about another access out of the site.
Yeah, there's two problems. One, getting on, the other is getting off.
Looking at it.
Your property.
We're, we're looking at it. It's, it's a bit of a long process, but we are, we are looking at that also.
Can you give me a sense of when this package is going to be put together? Because you're going to be up soon.
We hope to be, we hope to talk to DOT about, the next thing we need to do is go to DOT, and they're going to give us a scope of what they're going to be looking for as far as a ramp design. They're going to say, yep, you're right, you need a ramp, this is what we're looking for. Or ramps, whether it's one in, one out, or whatever it might be. Before the mid-part of next year, we'll be talking to DOT. And possibly a lot sooner than that.
And are you going to be trying to get into their budget cycle to help you? Or are you going to do this yourself?
We are hoping to get into their cycle. Again, this is more VHB's expertise, but apparently there are numerous grants that may be available, partnerships, whether it's with the state or, or the feds, or whatever it might be. But, I mean, right now, on the face of it, we're planning on doing as much of it ourselves as, as, as we can.
How many acres are left once you've completed this project?
Couple hundred, hundred-seventy-five, maybe.
And what are the plans for those? And my real question is, does this off-access or access and off-ramp accommodate whatever you're going to put up there?
So as part of this ramp proposal that we're going to be hopefully running by DOT and getting a scope from them, we had to show a potential build-out for the whole shebang, the whole four hundred acres. Everything to the north, everything that's left on the south, you know, whether it's R and D or if we do something else there, who knows? Or an office building on the opposite side of the R and D. We've got a small parcel that's north of the hotel. That really wouldn't cause any issue, it's, it's a small piece. But I'm talking full build-out. This thing is loaded with parking, buildings, you name it.
Right.
And once the analysis gets kind of narrowed. And once the analysis gets kind of narrowed down and hammered out as to what we'll be proposing to DOT exactly, that may change a little bit. There'll, there'll be a traffic number, it'll be like, you have this many trips. And maybe it's one huge commercial building. Maybe it's some residential and a little commercial, you know, but, but there'll be a number that's, that's going to go with the final study that VHB does.
Okay.
We're in the baby steps right now, but we're moving on.
I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, it's, we're, you know, we've known for a couple of years that we're just about at a point, depending on the size of the project and the type of project, that things are going to start to have to get moving out there, one way or the other. The beauty of doing this with DOT now is instead of just, all we had initially was, we're going to do, we're going to widen Spitbrook Road from here to here. Now we've got a bigger picture of the whole site, when things are going to have to get done. Maybe a little bit more on Spitbrook Road here, maybe a little less on this section here, you know, add a lane on the ramps, northbound, southbound, not to mention the highway ramp situation, so.
I am pleased as punch that you are addressing that issue now, because I tell you, my, my, my sense is that this board would not go along with adding more to that property.
If it were...
And that's okay.
Yeah, okay.
We're working on it, and I still am looking for an answer on how you came up with the answer you did with, what are the criteria? Be happy to hear that. And thank you very much.
You're looking for an answer on the, how we came up with what?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm looking at this, at the memo prepared by VHB, and it appears what they've done is they've used the Institute of Transportation Engineers to come up with the peak hour data for the townhouse project, and what they've essentially stated is that it's a reverse-flow traffic, so it offers traffic balance to the intersections and, and doesn't lend itself to, it lends itself to negligible impacts at any of the intersections for the site. It doesn't say there's zero impacts, but it's negligible because of the size project. And what this report also states is that in the past, the, there was the R and D site that was approved, that had a certain amount of traffic impacts associated with it. And so what it's doing, it's saying the, you know, the R and D site was going to have this impact, the townhouses has this much, so there, there, you know, this project is now coming before the R and D, and it's far less of an impact than the R and D site is. And so that's what I see in the conclusion and in the table summary on page two of the memo dated September 26.
Yeah.
I can understand that. They, you know, the data that they have was generated from, you know, standard traffic engineering practices, and then they've applied that to the previous studies that they've prepared at these intersections, essentially stating that there's a negligible impact resulting from this project, because a 28-unit development is pretty minor, and it is a reverse-flow condition, as Mr. Walker stated, and as...
See, I find it counterintuitive. You've got 28 units, assuming one person per unit, and you accommodate only 15 of those people, according to the section of the VHB report. That's counterintuitive.
But what you have to understand is, and, and I hear this presentation a lot, because I'm not a traffic engineer, so I'm not typically the one giving it.
Nor am I. I'm just saying it's counterintuitive. It has nothing to do with engineering.
Well...
You have 28 people, probably 56, because in this day and age, married people both have to work.
But I think that's...
And your assumptions are wrong.
I think that's where, and I don't believe the assumptions are wrong, I actually disagree with you relative to that.
Okay.
Because when I look at, just look at where I live, okay? My wife stays home long enough to get the kids on the bus, so she's not contributing to a peak hour tra- the peak hour traffic. She's leaving at nine instead of at seven.
How about this? Make the assumption that both people work. There are no kids. It's only a two-bedroom place.
That's fine.
Just make that assumption. Now what number would you come up with?
Well, that, that is accounted for in the traffic data in the Institute of Engineers. It's accounted for. There's hu- there's a large data plot of this type of use where they take, yeah, where they count traffic, you know, during the, the AM and PM peak hours, and they determine how many, you know, you have a 50-unit development, how much traffic is coming through, how does that correlate to the number of units in the development? There's just so many different factors. Some people work different shifts, some people, you know, are retired.
Is that the criteria that gave them that number?
It is usual...
They work at double shifts. There aren't two people in the apartment. What's the criteria?
It's a blend. It's from a number of sites.
Okay.
The Institute of Transportation Engineers, and I can't, if I had that book, it's, it's a very, you know, large book, but it says in the beginning of that particular section pertaining to multifamily housing, how many data plots are, you know, they analyzed, and typically it's thousands, thousands. So it's a blend. It's a, it's a good representation of what you would expect on any site.
Okay. Also, I, I heard your story about parking, and, and the design of this, this area does not lend itself to being very friendly to visitors. I know you want a 24-foot versus a 28-foot. 28 would give you some parking up there. And I, it, it's my understanding, this is rental property, is that, is that right? It's not, you're not selling this stuff. It's a rental property.
That's correct. It is a rental property, which means there would be, you know, a lease agreement, which would state, you know, that there would be no parking on the road and where the visitor parking is, and, and so on.
But it's, you, it's, it's visitor-unfriendly. You described up here how far people have to walk. Did you take into account winter?
The properties are maintained.
No, no, I didn't say about maintenance. I said walking. If I wanted, they're having a, a birthday party. Let's assume that that couple had a kid, and they have a birthday party. Where are you going to put these people in the winter?
Well, I think this is, you know, this is a conversation that we have a lot, and it's, you know, there ha- there's, there has to be a diversity in housing stock. I mean, you can look anywhere in the city, and people don't have a parking lot to park on. It's on-street parking.
Yeah, but a 28-foot wide road would accommodate for visitors, not 24.
I, I, I believe a 24-foot wide road is plenty wide enough for this development.
And I believe it isn't, so, you know, it's a standoff here, sir. Now, Mr. Chair, that's enough for me. Let me think a bit.
Could I just, could I just speak on that last point with the, the parking?
Yes.
And I can actually relate to this.
I'm sorry?
I, I can relate to this. I, I live on, I live on Main Street in Bridgewater, Mass. I've got enough room in my driveway for three, possibly four cars. On the holidays, we'll have 40, 50 people over, and they park about 400, 500 yards down the street in an empty parking lot.
Do you have a 24-foot or a 28-foot wide road? Can they park on the street?
They cannot park on the street, no. It's Main Street, and they cannot park there. There are no breakdown lanes. There's no parking.
Okay.
And we don't have, and that's an unmaintained parking lot that they need, that we have them go park in. It's an old school. And we haven't had any issues. That aside, Mr. Flatley takes brutally good care of his properties. It's always plowed. It's always walkable or drivable, you know, whether you're in a car on, on a hill with a steep slope, or you're walking on a steep slope, you're going to be able to do it safely. And that's, that's important to our company. It's important to him, and it's important to keep our residents safe, so.
And that's why I'm surprised you're proposing a 24-foot road. I know he's, he's a good developer. He's good for the city. He's good for the workers. But this doesn't make sense to me. It's counterintuitive to me from a traffic point of view, and it's not in line with what I remember John Flatley doing for the city and for these apartments. It just made, the whole project doesn't make sense from those two perspectives.
I mean, just going through the math on it, you've got a 24 versus 28-foot wide road, so it would be two extra feet on each side. Car's eight feet wide. And the extra, the extra four feet honestly don't really provide much of, much of anything, except extra driving area, which is fine, and I don't really have an issue with that. But I guess my point is, you know, an extra, an extra two feet on each side, to me, isn't safe to park on.
Okay. Well, then let's assume you put all the four feet on one side, parking only on one.
Car's eight feet wide. Your, your, and your car's still sticking in, your car's still sticking in the parking.
Hey, look, it, it's your development, and the accessibility to it, I question.
I understand.
I also question whether or not it's going to be a burden to the city eventually, because nobody will live there. That, that's all I have to say. I think this is not up to Flatley's standards, frankly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Peterson?
I have a question regarding, when I look at the overall site plan, the proposed name for the Townhouse Road is Storage Drive. Are you going to keep that name, Storage Drive?
I believe that is the name that was selected, yes.
Storage like data storage or storage unit?
Data storage.
Sounds so industrial, but that's your choice, I presume, but I would pick a prettier name, personally. Minor issue compared to 28 versus 24. I kind of lean towards the 28, because when you have company coming over, it sure is nice that your people don't have to walk a long distance to visit your house.
I, I think they've heard us on that issue.
Okay, I'm, I'm finished.
We can discuss it, yeah. The logations. Did you, anything else, Mr. Peterson, there?
Well, that's it. Thank you.
I got a question.
Mr. Parker?
Just, what's the, what's the occupancy rate and the rest of the, the development?
Yeah.
The last number I heard, which was probably a few months ago, was between 97 and 99 percent.
Okay. So historically, renting is not been an issue?
No, it's, it's, it's full. The 97 to 99 is typically at 100 within a couple of weeks. If something's empty, it's usually empty more than a couple of weeks.
Yeah, okay. That's the only question I had.
I had one more.
Go ahead.
Who's responsible for maintaining the sidewalk where the tenants are walking to the parking lot on the other side of the street?
Sure, this is, it's all private, so it would be...
Oh, you...
It would be the, the company, John Flatley Company.
I have a question for staff. The applicant may have to answer something afterwards, so it, and it looks like there's an extension of the overhead utility on Transistor Road by at least a pole or two, which I personally think is fine, but does that constitute, would they need a wa- a waiver, because a portion of the utilities are overhead? Or is it, you know, like, there's a piece along, along Transistor Road. I mean, it, it makes sense. They're, they're extending the pole line down the road there, but there's no waiver for...
What's on subdivision, right?
That's why I'm asking the question. I just don't want it to be missing a waiver that it needs itself, you know? I'm not against the wa- it looks like it's all underground within the actual cul-de-sac and along that road, but there is some overhead portion on the site plan.
That, that's the overhead portion on what they now call Transistor Road or the service road to 300?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's existing service line to that building. I believe they're tapping off of that for the residential?
Yeah.
Is that correct? And you're going underground, down the pole?
We're proposing one pole, which is just a drop pole.
Right.
You know, so the, the electric would come to that pole, and then it would service the entire townhouse development underground.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it totally makes sense to me what's being done. I just don't want to get halfway through and, like, missing a waiver.
Transistor Road's an existing road, so we would count that. That's an existing pole and overhead line.
Okay.
And it's not be, that would remain whether this project went forward or not.
Right.
So that's the best way of looking at it. If you're proposing overhead in this development, well then, I'd say yes, they would need a waiver.
Okay. Thanks, that's all I needed.
I think we're all set for now.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan? I'm sorry? I said, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan? If so, okay, please come forward, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Elizabeth Chapitas, 16 Shakespeare Road. I have a different issue, which I've spoken to this committee before. It's regarding blasting, and I have just heard that there is no intention to blast. However, should that change, I understand that there are new blasting regulations coming forward, and I would hope that they would be subject to those new regulations. And that is my question.
I'm, I will admit that I'm not aware of the status of the regulations. Roger, do you know?
I know the, the fire rescue department's working on some. I don't believe they've gotten to the point where they've been introduced. Once they're introduced, they would have to comply with them. It depends. This has already been applied, so I'm not sure that those would have any effect on this development if, in fact, they ran into an odd pocket of ledge. Hopefully, they don't, but...
I'm sorry.
So, so the short answer is that, so the regulations may be in sort of the discussion phase, but they have not been finalized yet, so they would likely not apply here. However, there are existing requirements that apply to any blasting that has to be done. So the short answer, as I said, is, is likely those new regulations, which have not been formally adopted yet, would, would probably not apply if blasting were required, although as the applicant has said, they, they have no reason to think that any blasting would be done here.
Well, the plans require no blasting, so I would think that when they come up with the, the request to blast, if one is, if a regulation is already approved, that they would be subject to it.
Right, and it sounds like the, the regulations are not approved yet. They're not at that phase.
Okay. All right, so I have to work on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I'm Mary Ann Malizzi-Golia. I reside at 2 Amble Road, and I'm the alderman for Ward 8. I'm here to just voice some concerns that have been expressed to me by various constituents, and some of these concerns have been repeated as the meetings have been canceled and rescheduled. So I know there are ongoing concerns. Two of the concerns, Mr. Kelly addressed one was the traffic, and I know what the traffic study says, and I emailed the letter that was received in your office to constituents so they could see the numbers and read the explanations. And there is a huge problem on Spitbrook Road, and I think the people who drive Spitbrook Road just want this board to continue to think about the ongoing impact of traffic. And although it's anticipated, much of the traffic in the morning is office park traffic with more traffic entering than exiting, unfortunately, the problem at Tara and Spitbrook Road is only part of the problem. I think all of us who drive that area know Brook Village Road and Spitbrook, and then when you get to the ramps, both northbound and southbound, is part of the problem. And so it is a much bigger problem than the Flatley traffic, but right now, it is what it is, and so many constituents have expressed concerns about what is going to happen, because probably all of the, even half of the residents living in the townhouses who drive are not going to be working there. So there's just a concern about adding to the already existing congestion there. The blasting concern, I was very happy when Mr. Walker told me they did not anticipate blasting, but with utilities being underground, I would anticipate that if there is a need to blast because some ledge is encountered, they will be going through the fire marshal as required. I would anticipate that if there is a need to blast because some ledge is encountered, they will be going through the fire marshal as required. And, and if there are new regs, um, they would have to adhere to those. The other concern I've had, um, and, and I followed up with the school department, is that since the first apartments started, um, being rented, Bicentennial Elementary especially has seen an increase in the number of students. And so several individuals contacted me regarding, um, how further residential development is going to be impacting the, um, class size at Bicentennial. And as of October eighteenth, there are forty-eight students from the existing apartments who attend Nashua City Public Schools. Six of them are in high school, two of them are in middle school, and thirty-eight of them are in elementary school, which means they're in K through five and attending Bicentennial. The concern that's been raised is that, um, we are going to see an increase in the number of families moving into the townhomes because they are two-bedroom townhomes, so, again, just to put that on your radar, um, that there is, again, a concern about the impact on the schools and class sizes at Bicentennial. So, um, those are the primary concerns that have been voiced to me, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the plan? The applicant wanna speak to those issues that were raised?
Yeah, that, uh, just, uh, just one issue that came up, um, we, we understand, uh, any issues that have to do with students in the school system, and I just wanna make sure the board is aware that, as part of any residential development, like we did with Tara Heights, we're required to, uh, pay a school impact fee. Um, and the Tara Heights buildings, I wanna say was around twenty-five thousand dollars, um, I think it was twenty-five thousand a building, and we've got thirteen buildings. And all of, all of that money is, uh, if there is impact to the schools, that, that money can be used, to make improvements or, or that type of, uh, that type of action, uh, which we will be doing with this. As a residential development, we're gonna be required to pay the impact fee, uh, which we have no issue doing, so, thank you.
Chad Brandon again with Fieldstone Land Consultants, I just, uh, wanted to speak just to the test pits in a little more detail. You know, similar to any of the other projects that we've done, we've, we have performed a number of test pits on this site, so we have a very good understanding of the soils on site. And that consisted of eleven test pits on this project, all of which we dug to depths of about ten feet, and we didn't encounter any ledge. So I just, you know, wanted to share that detail, I, I don't believe I addressed that in the, um, initial presentation, but, so, in this particular site appears to be, you know, it's, it's, uh, got some nice free draining soils on it. Certainly on the other side of the wetland complex and on the hill, it was very, um, ledgy, so I can appreciate some of the concerns that were raised. But we, we are quite confident that, that we're not gonna encounter any ledge with, um, this, this particular townhouse, uh, project.
Mr. Chairman? Are those test pits were designed to look at whether there's ledge on the buildings that you're gonna put up? Or were they also addressing the issue of underground, um, service?
Sure, that's a very good question. Well, we, we dug probably four or five test pits in the general location of the units. And then we also dug test pits down by, um, the drainage basin in the back, which is at a much lower elevation. Um, and that's actually where the sewer line is going to run down in that direction as well. So we tried to get a good, um, you know, a good blend of, of test pits in various locations on site, and we didn't hit ledge in any, um, location. Now, I mean, practically speaking, I, I can't stand before you and say we're not, we're absolutely not gonna hit any ledge, but I can speak with some confidence that, um, the soil characteristics, you know, in this corner or portion of the project is, is very different than, than where it has been elsewhere.
Would, would slab-on-grade units wouldn't, would be more likely you'd adjust grading versus blasting for slabs, I mean, right?
Yeah, so, I mean, what's essentially happening with this site is we're coming down the hill and the road is turning, you know, to the left, and we're cutting on the left-hand side, you know, and taking that material and kind of, um, transporting it to the downhill side and creating a, you know, kind of a level area where the units would be. And, you know, with a slab on grade, the grade technically could be created by a cut, but it is a slab and it's a, you know, a frost wall, so you're looking at, you know, foundation depths of about five feet.
Five feet, yeah, okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you. Alderman, did you have anything, did you wanna speak to anything with the applicant?
I, I would just, um, acknowledge that there are school impact fees, and again, I think that, um, in the city of Nashua, the, um, class size and crowding of schools is, um, a topic that many of us are very well aware of. And, um, we know about the rentals of portables and how much the city has spent on portables in schools that have been overcrowded. We know what it's costing us to redo some of our elementary schools, and we're looking at redoing, um, Elm Street. So, I, I fully appreciate the school impact fees, but again, there is an impact at Bicentennial, and there has been growing concern. And so I was asked to bring that to your attention, so we are aware of what's happening as, um, as more families are, are moving into the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? The applicant? Could the applicant have anything to add?
I think we're all set.
Great, thank you. Okay, this concludes the hearing on this application, we'll now take our deliberations into the public meeting. The board does reserve the right to recall any party for further clarification. So, I, I know we've already talked a lot about traffic, so I'll just, I'll.
Excuse me, Adam?
Yes.
There's just a couple of quick edits on waiver number three.
Sure.
Uh, the request for a waiver of NRO one ninety-two oh eight, it should say E, one and two, which requires cul-de-sac streets not to exceed seven hundred and fifty feet in length, and the addition of an emergency access lane. And, uh, on number ten, uh, it refers to two emails, one for November first, two thousand seventeen, and we should also add the email tonight, November eighth, two thousand seventeen.
Can you repeat that second one you sent?
Sure, yeah. Number ten, prior to the issuance of the first building permit, all comments, and two emails from Adam Puleo, Fire Marshal, dated November first, two thousand seventeen, and November eighth, two thousand seventeen.
Okay, we have.
Shall be addressed to the satisfaction.
Yep. And then you can clarify that stipulation number twelve is then dealt with.
Covered that a bit, yeah, with Penichuk, and there would be extending the line from the, uh, hotel, I believe that, that's where.
Been taken care of, okay.
But it's there, you probably wanna keep it in, just, you know, I'm thinking in terms of just, you know.
You can leave it in, okay.
Yeah, I, just.
All right.
To be thorough on that.
Thanks, Scott.
Sure.
Yeah, so I, just, my two cents on traffic, I mean, I think we have to consider this project sort of within the scope of the other development that's being proposed, but also sort of the scope of the, the traffic problem that exists on Spitbrook Road. And, I mean, I think the, the impact of this particular development is, is likely to be very modest when you consider, you know, how many units of housing are, you know, ex, you know, using Spitbrook Road and, and, and just in that general area. So, I mean, I do think we had, you know, some good detail, um, from the applicant about what they, they would be proposing to do further down the line, um, when they're, you're doing more significant further development at the site. But I think with this particular project, I mean, I, I think, you know, with the, the, the information we have from VHB and that having been reviewed by the city traffic engineer, I think, you know, I, I feel pretty confident that the, the traffic impact is not gonna be significant here.
Mr. Chair, I respectfully disagree. I don't think they addressed it adequately. And for that reason, I'm gonna vote against this project.
Okay, I, I mean, I would just keep in mind that, you know, we have, we have a report that was prepared by a traffic engineer.
I understand what you're saying.
And that was reviewed by the city traffic engineer, so I'm just saying, you know, we don't have any expert testimony that would contradict the information that we've been provided. And, you know, I for one don't feel like I'm in the position to contradict the judgment of the, the third-party traffic engineer and the city traffic engineer to say, no, I, I think there is gonna be significant traffic impact. I just think, as, as I said, just as, it, it, from a non-engineering perspective, is, is, you know, just a practical matter. It seems to me when you, when you talk about twenty-eight townhomes versus the thousands of units of housing that are utilizing Spitbrook Road, it's just not gonna have, it's gonna have an incremental impact. But a fairly small one, I think, I mean, I, I just don't see how you, you know, how you get to a different conclusion that this is, this is gonna meaningfully change the problem on Spitbrook Road, and undoubtedly, there is a traffic problem. But I don't think this is, this is gonna be, you know, a significant change to that existing problem, and it's gonna require a different sort of solution than I think the applicant.
You can vote appropriately, just telling you, it doesn't, it's counterintuitive to me, and you can vote your way, I'm just telling you, I don't agree.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'll give my own experience, and I mean, I drive Spitbrook Road every day, you know, multiple times a day, so. In, in my experience, the issues with, the majority of the issues with Spitbrook Road traffic are actually from Daniel Webster up to the highway, that side's a disaster, right? And then from, um, beyond the Tower Boulevard up to Bicentennial. And, you know, I don't personally get jammed up between Tara and the highway really ever. That part does still flow, and, you know, realistically, that part was designed for the full digital build-out when that was there. And, you know, back when the full digital build-out was full, I mean, there was the traffic coming out of that each day, like, I mean, that was all at the same time, and that was massive, you know? So I'm not really experiencing, personally, and I'm just giving my personal opinion, I'm not really experiencing any delay in my day-to-day traffic from Tara to the highway. As soon as I go beyond the highway, it's dead stop, right, on the Daniel Webster side, that side's tough, you know? And it also gets pretty bad between Tara and Bicentennial, cause it's like a stop sign right there. But I don't generally get much issue rate there at that, at Tara, so. So I'm not super concerned about the twenty-eight units in, at this point, I mean, certainly if we get to the next couple of projects that we've all seen, I mean, we've seen the master plans here, you know, a couple of years ago, whatever, um, and, you know, with larger commercial development. And really the occupancy of the, of the three old digital buildings is really, doesn't appear to be that high at the moment either, so. So I, I'm not, I'm inclined to not be as concerned about the traffic on this particular project, you know, at the moment, myself. And I, I kinda think too that, in order to get to the, the improvements, we gotta get enough sort of development on that site to warrant the rest of the improvements. You know, like, we all wanna get to the off-ramp, and we all wanna get to the commercial buildings to kind of bump up the, you know, I mean, that's a good thing for the city, but we need, the residential is helping, to me, support the, the potential development of the, of the commercial side. So, I mean, I feel like it's a means to an end here that is going in the right direction for me, anyway. Um, and it, it's pretty consistent with the plan that I've seen for the site over, I mean, I've been on the board for, whatever, five years. It, it's always been going in the same direction, it doesn't look like they're diverting to me in a, a different direction than what we've seen, um, that I can remember. So I'm, I'm still pretty much in favor of what's going on. I mean, the parking thing, I kinda agree with you, I mean, I, I'm not sure. It'd be nice to have some additional parking, I think, to me, that just is gonna be a detractor for a buyer. Um, that's why I was interested in, uh, in how well they've been able to rent so far. And, you know, my guess is if, you know, if these don't rent well because they can't, don't have enough parking area, I mean, there is plenty of site there for them to build some extra parking or something. That's really a renter, you know, real estate issue, I think that, you know?
Yeah, and I would, and I, and just, uh, on that particular point about the parking, I, I would note that we approved a project a few months ago, West Hollis Street there, it was a condominium project, same waiver request for the twenty-four-foot wide road. And, you know, the discussion we had there was similarly, you know, this is really, it's an issue for the, the buyer, you know, to consider, and that it was gonna be appropriately signed, no parking, there was gonna be, I think there might have been three spots per unit there. But the difference there was that there was no, there was no other parking, that was it, it was that street, it was a, you know, it was a cul-de-sac like this. But it was off of, you know, West Hollis, there was no, there was no other parking. And, and again, I think if, the solution we can do was, you know, you know, people are just gonna have to adjust their expectations if people are looking, you know, at renting or buying a property, um, and it's apparent that, you know, there's either limited parking or in this case, substantial additional parking, but that it's, you know, a bit of a walk away. I mean, I think that's just something that people have to consider when they're, when they're renting the apartment.
Yeah, I agree with that, yeah. And, you know, the class size thing is, um, is a good point, I'm glad people are bringing that up. You know, I, I think that, you know, my own opinion though on, on sort of school funding and stuff is, again, it's tied to tax base, right? And this whole parcel is, is definitely increasing the tax base in, in Nashua in a positive way. I mean, it, it's private roads, it's not like, you know, I mean, there's gotta be more money flowing into the city from the site than going out. To me, it seems like the more we can develop this site, the better it is for the city.
You don't know how much it's gonna cost for the egress and access, that's a big bill. So I disagree with you when you start saying more's coming in than going out.
Well, I mean, on this, on the school point in particular, I mean, I, I don't know what the, what the population is at, at Bicentennial right now, but I know that in this, citywide, the school population is actually declining, not increasing. You know, Main Dunstable, where my kids go, it's been declining for the last several years. And that's the general trend in Nashua and in the state of New Hampshire, the population's aging. So, to me, if we're doing things to attract younger families with children, that's, that's a good thing long-term for Nashua and for the state. And, you know, that's not to say that we don't need to be mindful of, you know, the impact on particular schools, the impact on the school system, you know, in its entirety, you know, for the longer term. But as you said, Scott, I mean, I think, you know, increasing the property base is, is a good way to, you know, to improve the funding situation for, for, you know, the entire school st- district, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think we know, I mean, we've all seen the maps of Nashua, there's not a lot of more, a lot more area to really develop. I mean, we're, we're getting pretty close to the end of the, end of the road here with regard to, I mean, this, this plot's been on, obviously, everyone's size for a while, but it's not many others, this is. This is kind of one of the last few for housing, anyway. My thoughts. Anybody else?
Can I ask Mr. Walsh a couple of questions? Is it too late for that?
Uh, we have to reopen, I think.
Yeah, we'd have to reopen.
But we can, we cannot reopen, yeah. If you need to.
Just for a minute.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, just, well, does someone want to make a motion? Do you want to ask the questions first, and then we can, then we can talk about, make them?
Okay. Well, I, I just wanted to ask how many residents currently live at Tara Heights in total?
And just, we'll hold off for a second until we.
And, and what's the largest style unit you have there? The number of bedrooms? I'm just curious.
Okay, so.
Yeah. I make a motion to open a public hearing to ask a couple more questions of the applicant.
For that limited purpose, right?
For these purposes, yeah.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Kelly. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Again, Kevin Walk from the John Flaherty Company. Right now, in the entire Tara Heights development, there are 564 units. There were 384 in what we call Tara Heights Two, and then initially 180 units in what was initially submitted as Tara Heights. The most, most number of bedrooms, the entire development is two. It's a, it's a mix between one and two. Don't have the percentage. I want to say it's close to 50/50, one bedroom, two bedroom.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that answer everything?
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out what percentage of your residents are school-aged children.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Basically. Thank you.
Good. Yeah. All right. This concludes the, the hearing on this application. We will now take deliberations into the public meeting again. The board does preserve the right to call any party for further clarification.
No other questions? Dan, you think your biggest concerns are just that, that kind of traffic coming and coming and coming kind of thing along that way? I mean.
There are a couple of concerns here. One of them is that they are looking at Spitbrook Road, and you have already identified the problem isn't necessarily there.
Right.
What comes out has to go somewhere.
Yeah.
It's adding to the burden of our traffic problem, and nobody seems to be addressing it.
Right.
If we're going to be taking a look at an R&amp;D center, which is going to have a massive impact on traffic.
Yeah.
I think we need to address the issue now, and I would even go so far as to say, when the R&amp;D issue comes up, make one of the caveats, that unless the traffic problem is resolved, it's not going to happen.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's reasonable.
28 units.
Yeah.
The, the second point I want to make is, I'm not a traffic engineer either, but it's counterintuitive when you have 28 units and you're only counting 15 people.
Well, remember, that's 15 in an hour, though, right?
15 trips.
In an hour, not, not like.
15 at peak, morning, afternoon.
Yeah, at peak, yeah.
In this day and age, both the husband and the wife have to work, and probably, and I'm making an assumption, that they will go out at about the same time, let's say within a 15-minute window, depending on where they have to go to work. This, this, the assumptions they made and the criteria they used are confusing to me.
Yeah.
And for that reason, I'm going to vote no.
Yeah, I mean, I think they're using regular, you know.
Yeah, but I want to know the criteria that they come, that they use to come up with these answers.
Well, I, I don't think it's the applicant that's coming up with it.
No, they're using like civil engineering.
It's, it's the state or local.
It's not, it's not a person issue, folks.
Yeah.
They hired a company to give them an answer. I want to know what that company used for their criteria to provide the answers that they agreed to.
Right, but I think, I think they, I think Chad did identify the, the source that they're relying on for the data that they're using to support their conclusions.
Yeah, and I'll tell you, how many, I don't know how many sections there are to what they've identified, but you can pick any section of these documents to justify what you want to do. That's why I keep asking, what was the criteria used to come up with this? So, I, traffic is my thing. I, I think we're way beyond waiting for the DOT and for Flatley and for the city and everybody else to come up with some answers.
Yeah.
Put a budget together. You better start looking at public-private partnership, ways to solve our problem.
Right.
And it's not happening fast enough for me. This, in my opinion, is the start of saying no. Until you come up with some answers, no.
Yeah, I mean, you obviously are not going to fund a, you know, Spitbrook Road improvements off a 28-unit.
It's bigger than that. The whole of South Nashua needs to be addressed. I'm not suggesting that.
Yeah. But I don't disagree with you when the, you know, the larger, you know, potential R&amp;D commercial development, but I think that's, that's the time to do it, you know, part of that. It's got to be.
Do you know how long it takes to get on the, on the traffic list, to get money to repair anything? This, this should have happened six, seven years ago, just so we could be talking about it in realistic terms today.
Right.
We're just now beginning to look at the problem today.
Yeah. All right. Anybody have any questions or concerns on the waiver?
No.
Which waiver are you talking about?
Any of the three.
Oh.
Yeah, I don't personally.
I have a question about that. And number two, when we talk about the design standards for private streets.
Yeah.
Encased in that, is that the difference between 24 feet and 28 feet? Is that included in this waiver?
So, was the, the two portions of that, that they're requesting the waiver from, and Scott did confirm this, it's the width, the street width and the curbing. So, it's, they're not going to use grant curbing.
Okay, thank you.
Grant the waiver.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion in, I think, are we still on new business number two?
Yes.
New business number two site plan, owner John J. Flatley Company, amendment to NRO 2165 for 28-unit townhouse development on 200 innovative wave. I'd like to make the motion that this plan does meet the requirements in NRO Section 190-146D, and that there be 14 stipulations as, for those stipulations, the first, first one being the request of waiver for, a request for a waiver of NRO Section 190-279B be read as is granted and will not be contrary. The second waiver of NRO 190-211B be read as is granted and will not be contrary, and, you know, appended at the end of it to that the, the waived criteria being the street width and the curb material only. Waiver number three being of, for NRO Section 190-208E, Section 1 and 2, and that be is grant, and that that be read, which requires cul-de-sac streets not to exceed 750 feet in length, and this waiver also include the addition, the addition that there is no requirement for an emergency access road, and that be is granted and will not be contrary. Stipulations four through 10 be as written in the staff report. Stipulation 11, I think that needs to be amended to be read the letter from Steve Dukren on November 14th, in lieu of the October letter. And 12 through 14 as written in the staff report.
So, motion by Mr. Leclerc to approve, approve new business number two, finding that does meet the requirements outlined in NRO Section 190-146D, with a total of 14 stipulations, the first three being waiver request, all reading is granted, will not be contrary, the spirit and intent of the regulation. And then the remaining stipulations as written in the staff report with the amendments indicated by Mr. Leclerc. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Is there any further discussion?
Just checking with the staff, that, that letter, the date change that I made on.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know how that got through because it was changed to November 14th, that's correct.
That's correct, okay.
Yeah, and then stipulation 10, that was November 1st, 2017, and November 8th, 2017.
We had, that, we have that, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So, how many, there's six of us, so five to one, motion passes. New business sites plans, case number three, has been postponed to the March 29th, 2018 meeting. Other business case number one, review of tentative agenda, determine proposals of regional impact.
I don't actually see it. I don't know if there is one.
Yeah, I didn't see that either. Roger, do we have a, anything there?
I thought you would have had one somewhere. But is it attached to the original staff report? The tech review. I, I don't recall anything being on it that would, that would cause regional impact.
I don't see it.
No, the.
I think we just push it.
November 2nd.
All right, Vlad, then you can make the motion.
Extension.
We're going to be here all night.
You got it, what is it saying?
Nope. I find nothing in it.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Weber that having reviewed the agenda, there are no proposals of regional impact. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kelly. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Good to keep everything.
Other business case number two, nomination committee for NCPP officers for the 2018 calendar year. So, typically, we've not really had a committee so much as just an individual who reaches out to everyone by email and says, who do you want to nominate for officers? I would just say, for everyone, I, and I've already talked to Scott about this, I asked if he would be willing to, to serve as chair for this coming year. Subject to obvious denomination of election, just to, to have a little bit of a change. I know I've been doing it for a little while, and I, I feel like it's good for the board to have some, some movement in the officer positions and not have the same person serve as chair, just really definitely. But I did indicate that, that it, you know, assuming everyone's in agreement, that I would continue on, happy to be, continue on as vice chair and then, you know, fill in, you know, in Scott's absence, if he's, you know, not able to attend. So, I just ask everyone to keep that in mind when you're considering nominations. So, with that, I designate Mr. Weber to be the nomination committee this year.
Oh, yay, congratulations.
I'll second that.
Second, so, motion for Mr. Weber to serve as the nomination committee, second by Mr. Leclerc, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Oh, yeah, big bagging.
Yes, that's right.
Doubled.
Who seconded it?
I did.
You have all the emails, right?
Yeah. I'll get them from the staff, anyway. They'll.
All right. Other business case number three, referral from the Board of Aldermen, proposed petition for street discontinuance. Portion of Amherst Street formerly utilized as part of the jug handle, which is reconfigured into a full signalized intersection. So, we have. We have a letter here. Yeah, we have.
Yeah.
So, we have, we have the submission from the Board of Aldermen, and then we also have a letter.
And you have a map on the reverse side of that.
Yeah. Right, so.
And then you also have a communication in your packet as well. If you like, I could go over it briefly, Mr. Chair. There was a small area as part of a southern jug handle for the recent traffic improvements that were just done in front of Whole Foods and Aldi's. And then the southern judge, jug handle was eliminated, and there was a small piece, roughly 6,800 square feet. When they came in before the board, they discussed having that discontinued so they could, that's really a part of their entryway, it's not a part of the street system anymore. That's where their throat to go into their shopping center is located now. And they also have their freestanding sign in that area, too. They got an encumbrance permit from the Board of Public Works for that area with the intent of coming back and squirreling away the, the discontinuance at a future date. Well, we're at that future date because the construction's done down there, and I think it works really well. We've heard nothing but compliments about the exit seven traffic flow these days, which is vastly improved. And this is just really a cleanup of that. City ordinance requires the city engineer to give comments to this board before you act on it. You do have that information in a memo from Mark Jennings in the City Engineers Department that finds the petition is acceptable to them. I know they have been working with the applicant, and staff would recommend a favorable recommendation on this street discontinuance.
Thank you, Roger. Seems pretty straightforward, and I certainly don't have any concerns about it. Does anyone have any questions, concerns?
Dan doesn't have any.
He's just making a motion.
Yeah, just so we make a motion for a favorable recommendation, I guess.
Yeah, or a, a recommendation for approval. I guess that's what it would be, right?
Well, it's, it's just a, it's a referral from the Board of Aldermen, so I don't think we're actually.
Looking for on the board, I guess, is there a recommendation for approval?
Yeah.
The board actually will sign the form that goes to the Board of Aldermen, and it is actually a recommendation for approval.
It's a recommendation, yeah.
It is a recommendation for approval. Okay, I'd make a motion that we recommend approval of this petition for the street discontinuance.
Motion by Mr. Leclerc to recommend approval of the petition. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Kelly. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Discussion items? And I can't even remember, what do you?
I have one discussion. Don't we usually do a Martha's trip around this time of year for the board?
A what?
I'm highly in favor of it.
I know Jerry was planning it like a month ago.
Yeah.
Are we going out?
You didn't hear that? No, I didn't.
Oh.
We could try to pick a date. I mean, it could even be after the.
A get-together date.
Oh, get-together date, yeah.
I mean, do people want, I mean, when's our next meeting?
When's our, when's our next meet? What's our meet January? The first of the January?
Oh, I think it's the 12th.
The 11th, yeah.
Is it?
Right here. January 11th.
11th, I got that one, sorry.
So, do we, do you want to do it in conjunction with that, or do we want to do a different?
Depends on how heavy the agenda is.
Yeah, right, probably this is the meeting.
Have you seen the agenda for that yet, no?
We don't have one right now. It doesn't look too full, based on what we've received.
Couple items, yeah.
Two items.
Yeah.
But it depends on, you know.
We had one.
We had one, and then it's.
Yeah, it obviously depends what the items are.
Well, I mean, we can do it differently.
Is one of them McDonald's?
McDonald's, yeah.
Okay, so that could, I don't know what response you'll get on that one.
No, it's.
A new McDonald's?
No, it's existing one on Northeastern Boulevard, so. And there was a lot of neighborhood concerns.
So, we could pick a different day.
How about for end of day?
Our people are.
I'm for that night, too, though.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's certainly, in some ways, it's just easier because we're all together, anyway.
Yeah.
Want to just tentatively plan? Wanna just tentatively plan and if it turns out that it's a super long meeting, we'll-
Yeah, and we did Mar- Martha's exchange, it's awesome.
Yeah.
It's easy to get to, walk in, have a few drinks, little appetizers.
Prior to that, somebody has to go down, get our little room, start ordering up some appetizer, give them a heads up of what we want.
Yeah.
And I'd be happy to do that, once we pick a date.
Let's go for the 11th.
Plan on that and assess-
January 11th?
Yeah.
January.
January 11th? That will be a Thursday.
It is, it is.
Tonight our meeting always is.
Always a Thursday.
So, post-meeting?
Yes.
Because the calendar here is 2017.
If we do pre-meeting, we may not make it.
That's true.
There'll be no forum.
Everything will pass.
All right.
So tentatively, um, social get-together on January 11th, correct?
Correct.
And I'll, I'll make reservations over there.
Excellent.
I'm gonna write it in my calendar here.
All right. Mr. Kelly, would you like to do the honors?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
I second it.
Seconded it, and, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes, and we adjourned at 8:50.